Jamestown City Council meeting, March 16th is now called to order. Terrence, you with ladies in prayer, please?
Heavenly Father, we come to you this day, I thank you for a beautiful day, another day of life, Lord. We thank you for each and every one that's here, Lord. Pray you be with them, their families and friends. We pray, Lord, as we gather tonight, the decisions we make will be pleasing to you. We pray that we think before we act, Lord, and think what's best for our town. Be with the citizens in Jamestown, Lord, Russell County, just be as people at work, because it's for sure the world needs you in troubled times. Go with us up this night, lead and guide and direct us, and where we fail you, Lord, we ask you to forgive us in your precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope everyone's had time to look over the minutes from the last meeting. And if nobody has a question or anything on that, I need a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
Say it.
Al, favor. Any opposed? First thing we've got to talk about tonight is the veterans banners, and this is something that we've been kind of discussing for a while, as to whether we're going to continue trying to do in Jamesstown. Have you had a chance to get anything, want to do banners?
One was ordered, it's not come in.
It's not in yet?
No.
Kevin, Al, yeah?
Should be anytime. It's overdue. It's overdue, but I know we need to answer it pretty quick.
I guess just when we get that, then we, you know, kind of need to make a decision if we're going to try to do it in Jamesstown, or if we're going to try to get with Russell's friends and see about...
Well, I spoke with the same guy he's been talking with, and he assured me that it was going to be much cheaper to go this route, and they would be made the same as what the ones...
Before were?
Yeah.
The ones we had in Jamesstown?
It's what he's assured me of.
Good looking, the ones that were here. So maybe, just if you will, keep in contact, see if we can get that, or...
I don't really care, no.
And then...
Is it going to be like this all the time?
No, I don't think so. No, he's got the ability, and he's going to have the ability to brand himself.
I don't know if he might be able to do it himself, but it's, uh, it's a new place he ordered from, so you may order there again, but it's, like I say, it's overdue to be...
When we get that, we need to look at, see what the cost is, see how all of the time that we're going to be looking at, and then make a decision what to do with that.
Make sure the hardware...
Yeah, 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 it's included, right, yeah.
Okay, so we'll leave that until we have more about that. Next thing we have for new business is Billy Dykes. I guess, maybe, we have some people here to represent. I guess Billy's not here, but...
Don't stand up.
Sure.
Come on, John.
Okay, but we're all here. I'm John McElroy, Sam Wilson, Amy McElroy, Randy and I, Roger Harmon, we're here on behalf of the Russell County Recovery Room. I was here last year, and you all agreed to support us and listen up. We're back this year to revisit that same thing. What, if anybody has any questions, what the Russell County Recovery Room is, is, it's something like a self-help urgent meeting house is what it is. It's a centralized location for anybody who is seeking help in recovery, mountain hallism, addiction, and also we have a meeting for families of alcoholics and drug addicts. It's a centralized location, that way people, speaking for myself whenever I got out of a treatment center, I had people around me this whole time for about a year that were all like-minded, they were all trying to stay sober, they were all trying to change their life. So whenever I come back home, I was looking for that same thing. It's just like anything else. If I want to learn more about something, I want to get better at something, I want to hang in there with something, I look for like-minded people, and that gives us all a place to do that. I can say that, listen, in the past year, I can't count how many people I have saw that have... We deal with a lot of drug court people. I went through drug court. I saw a lot of people complete drug court, continue to stay sober, get their children back, start working a legitimate job, be a productive member of society, and more than anything, I saw a lot of those people try to give back what they got. That's one of the reasons we all are, we all try to do this, we all try to give back, is that's one way that I know I can ensure my life better than my life is to help other people do the same thing. It keeps me plugged in, it keeps me around people I need to be around. If anybody has any questions about this, feel free to ask. I'm sure there's somebody here that can give you an answer.
You know, I've seen some baptized the last few weeks.
That's what...
I mean, I've witnessed myself. You're right.
Why is it saying this? Where is this, where is your meeting place?
It's at 108 Logan Street. You guys are welcome at any time to stop by and see what we're doing for yourself. There's a meeting there every night of the week at seven o'clock. There's one on Saturday also at 12:00. There's one on Wednesday at 12:00, and there's one on Saturday morning for family members of drug addicts, mountain hallics, and it's at nine o'clock in the morning.
Is there a secretary, or treasurer, or board, you know, a board, I mean, where's this, who's responsible for the money, I guess, well, I'm saying, who, you know, who's accountable for the money?
Accountable for the money, at this point, is about the funds that collect rent from the meetings. The meeting pays minimal rent, it's $30 a month, and what that does is that pays for the rent that they bill. That pays for that. It takes care of all that. And we tend to try to have small fundraisers and stuff like that, that way people that are involved can give back. That helps go a little bit away with the $1,000. That helps go toward keeping the lights on, water and stuff like that. What we're hoping for is eventually when the mortgage is paid off on this place, we won't need that. At that time, there won't be any more monthly mortgage payment. At that time, the money from the meetings, the rent from the meetings, that will go to the electric and stuff. That's, that's kind of what we all had in mind whenever we took this on, was at some point, we'd like this to be self-sustaining, not necessarily for us, but for future generations, you know. There's nothing worse, I would not wish anything like what I've lived on my children. Someday, if we're ever in drugs, finds ourselves in a place where I've been, I would like another place there for them.
How many members do you have that pays the $30 a month?
We've got, right now, nine meetings at $30 a month.
I've known, I've known John and Arastus, as I like to call him, his middle name, I know them for a long time, and they've come, I'm proud of y'all. It's just, it's just amazing to have the turnaround, but they've done, they've done really well. Done great.
Good to see everybody giving them a bit of help, because we've all had things that we've been addicted to, some way or another, and having the ability to stand up and go get help in mental life.
I didn't want to admit you three, leave you all out, but I've just, I've known them a long time, you know, but it's, it does a great job, I know.
So what you've got, what your members pay pays the mortgage, and...
Yeah, that, like I said, we, if, if we're falling a little bit short, we try to do stuff like have a card game or something like that, and the money from that goes back to that. We've been trying to pick up the pieces everywhere we can.
Just to keep it going?
Definitely, and we're getting more and more people involved, and the more people we get involved, the easier that's becoming.
Is, is Billy still involved?
Yes, absolutely. He's a worker right now.
Is it his building?
Yeah.
But Billy's also been through the program too, hasn't he?
Absolutely.
So, are you basically just kind of wanting to see if we can donate again, or is that...
That would be great.
Is it like a 12-step type road? I was just wondering, because I thought, oh, you got to action twice.
Definitely.
Because it was played out, it was spring and fall.
A plant's a tree, I'm sure, each, each one.
Anybody have any questions, or what's, anybody have thoughts on what we did in the past, was twice a year, we donated $500. What's in the spring, what's in the fall?
Well, like I said, I can, I'm sorry, I can testify to what, how far they've come, and they've done a great job. So I'd make a motion that we pass it to the spring.
I have a motion, my favor, to pass $500 for spring.
Say it.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Appreciate you all coming too, because it's hard sometimes to go ask for stuff, but, you know, somebody's got to do it, so we appreciate you all. Next thing we have is Kevin Williams. Kevin, as we all know, is a thing every year for the kids, and it's coming up again, April the 15th, so he's sent a video. He can't be here, he's not thinking California or somewhere, but he did come by the bank, and they are doing this April the 15th. I'll tell you a little more about something else they're doing too, after the video, if we get to the video. Sometimes it works, and sometimes it don't, right now?
Yeah, so I think we got it.
Good evening, Mayor, and the members of the Jamestown City Council, and I'm so excited to be with you. By the way, a video tonight, my name's Kevin Williams, and I'm a proud Russell Countyan. I love getting there in person, and my schedule is a little crazy right now. I think, as you watch this, I'm probably in California tonight with the Gager vocal band, so please forgive me, but thanks for this opportunity. And I would be very soon to, to just say thanks and answer any questions and chat with you for a while, but I love updating everyone on what's happening with the organization that's unique to Russell County, formed right here in 2014 to benefit economically challenged kids. I grew up here, fond memories for me, graduated Russell County High School, and began a career in music. Of course, all the studios, all that stuff, we're in Nashville, and so that's kind of what took me here. I had a lot of help along the way, and I know members of this council were there for me when I needed you. I had neighbors, I had church family, and I had two hardworking parents in the home. I was really blessed. Now, kids today don't have a lot of what I had, and, and none of us grew up with a silver spoon here, okay? We know what it is to struggle and scrap and get along, so I think you identify with me, and, and I just want to be there for kids like I was, like we were, in some way. The culture is so different today, because it's very isolated, polarized, in a sense, and we don't know the needs that are right around us a lot of the time. We don't even know the names of the kids down the street sometimes. So it is different than it was in the 1970s, okay? So I said, let's, let's get a little part of money, let's see what we can do with this. We met with some members of the business community around here, years to pass, or we had media there, we had people from the education department there, and we just devised a little plan, and said, what if we do this at a grassroots level, just some concerned Russell Countyans there for the kids, to say, we've got your back, right? And, and we're not buying shoes for everybody, coats for everybody, it's not that, it's not like a state-run program. What if we, if this kid needs shoes, let's provide shoes for him, and, and if this one, she needs a coat, let's give her a coat. And let's see if we can get in their lives and do something productive that says, we've got your cover, you matter to us, you're important, and we expect something from you. We expect you to grow up and be a responsible, productive citizen, right? That's what we're trying to create here. Get in their mind with ideas, and first, be able to get in there with some, some help, and some of that help takes money. So I brought money, and 2014, a lot of you folks all donated here. The community came together, businesses, I remember the Chamber of Commerce said, we're going to do away with our door prices, we're going to give you money from what we threw spent for door prices. It was just amazing. Everybody, people were doing pinto bean soups, and all kinds of things to raise money, car washes, churches got a lot more, and it was, it was truly something I don't believe could have happened anywhere else other than Russell County, Kentucky. Well, yeah, it's, we have a nine-year track record of helping children get in their lives and molding them, and doing what's positive and right for them. And to my knowledge, out of 120 counties in the state of Kentucky, we are the only ones that has anything like this. It's, it's a beautiful thing that blesses me. I remember seeing the community come together after the tornadoes in the 70s, and rebuild, and, and nobody had to tell them to do that. That's just what the community does, and that's what happened here. So the first year, we over-doubled our goal, came in, and it's increased every year, and, and the city council in this city has been such an amazing part of that every year. So from my heart to you, thank you, and we think this year's going to be even bigger. Seems like all the businesses are on board, and I got to speak to a 10-county child abuse conference at Lindsey Wilson about two weeks ago, and it was an amazing time. Got to talk with a lot of educational personnel, social service personnel, who work with kids on a daily basis, and they're all saying, how do you do this? What, what happens in your town? What, what is this all about? I get to say, hey, it's a bunch of caring people that love kids and can embrace the idea of empowering the next generation, because folks, we're not going to be here all the time. At some point, we're going to take a break. At some point, we're going to drift out of the picture, somebody's going to take our place, and we've got to equip them today for that. You've always been on board, so I'm not going to ask you for money. I hope you'll always do the right thing. You've proved that, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you, Russell County, and thank you to this wonderful council for supporting what I believe is going to produce, all of the teachers and leaders, business leaders, pastors, attorneys, doctors, you name it. I think there's going to be a crop of those from Russell County, Kentucky, that are going to rise up and be the leaders in our state for the next 20 years. People come to say, you say, what are they doing over there? And we get to talk about this. So God bless you for all your help. The concert is going to be April 15th. Don't think of it as tax day, that's going to be in the even following Monday, I think, but Saturday, April 15th, at 6:00 PM, Russell Springs First Baptist Church. They've been so kind to host us every year, and grateful for them. The doors will open at 5:00, concert at 6:00. I've got special guests with me, Matthew Holt from the Gager Tour, Michael Shade Rousey from the Gager Tour's going to be here. I've got a special guest that can announce tonight. It's a surprise, but we'll announce it in a few days. We're just trying to work all the details out, so we do it right. You're going to love it, you're going to want to be there. My guitar teacher, Larry Beasley, is going to be there, and Claire Westing, who was with us last year, so the whole band is looking forward to seeing you. And a gospel quartet near and dear to my heart, the Crossroads Quartet, with 63 years of music ministry is going to be there. We're going to have a community choir, we're going to have kids singing. It's going to be an amazing night, and I want you to join me. Checks payable to Kevin's kids, or to the Russell Springs First Baptist Church, whatever you desire. So all going to go in the same pot of money, and be dispersed after that, and you can get your check to anybody, all for the cause. Anybody here on the council knows what to do, so that gets you fixed up. And let me make this note, all the money stays in Russell County, okay? Never leaves the county, and is used for needs in the county. It is a protected fund that's held at the state, at the Board of Education here in the county, but it's not operated by the state, and it's not to be used for any other reasons, other than what is set up by these resource managers that we have at every school, okay? So in other words, if they want to pay the light bill with it, they can. That's the way it's set up, and I love that. Only in Russell County. So thank God, and thank you for your effort. If you need me, everybody wants to get on with me, please contact me if you got any questions, and if you want to help with this, we'd love to put you to work, okay? God bless you, and thanks for this time. Bye-bye.
Kevin did come by the bank, and I talked to him a few minutes, and I believe he told me that, the way I understood it before, they were, they were still limited to what they use these funds for, but I think they're adding to, like you've got kids that need dental work that's picked up at the schools, they're tested, and they need dental work, or they may need a filling, or they may need something, and they don't have funds to do it. I think that's something they're adding to that, as long as it's, they know that it's needed, and they're set the appointments up and make sure it's taken care of, and if they will provide that, you know, for the kids, I think that's going to be... I, I'm not sure about glasses, I just remember him, he was just there a few minutes and kind of, you know, just talking a little bit.
I think it's basically what they found the resource center does, they can, if they need extra funds, they can use it, as I've understood.
It was limited to certain things before, but the way he was telling me that day, that they were adding dental to it. So I, it may be more things too, but basically, you know, whatever kids need, I think, is best ours, is knowing that it's used for what it's supposed to, and it's whatever they've got in the guidelines. But I guess we need to think, to talk about tonight, if we want to donate, if we're going to, what am I going to do, because this is April the 15th, and we'll have to have the money to them by the concert, and that'll be right, I don't know if we have our members' council, will that be for the... Be right at it anyway, so that's something we need to make a decision on tonight.
I make a motion to give them the same amount we gave last year, what was it?
$2,500, that's what we, that's what we give City of Russell Springs, and I think the county has given, right?
That's right, I know we gave $2,500.
I think that's what it's been across the board. I know it has for both cities for the last few years. So I have a motion by Tony.
I have a motion to give them $2,500 again this year.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
We're going to rip them out.
Yeah, there's a little out there. Just a few little things that I have, just a couple little things that's going to be going on. Randy Martin contacted me, they're going to do the community egg hunt again this year, Russell Springs Park. It says in the paper, I read, that it's given for April the 3rd, but what he told me is that's going to be March the 26th, because of spring break being the 1st of April, so they've kind of moved it up to a date that wouldn't interfere maybe with that. So if there was a spring city park, anybody they would like for us to be involved.
Are they going to be able to do it term of the... Will they have everything yet?
I don't know, but they may change, some, you know, something may have to change. He did even say, you know, when he, when I talked to him, that they may even have to look at some, like, you're on for a bigger place, because I think they're pretty...
A little bit further, huh?
He just said that they would be getting in contact with us, with more information, and probably with that happening at the city, with the damage they've got, they may have to move it, but it is, unless they change it, the date's March the 26th, and once I hear more, I'll let you all know, by, you know, where it's going to be, or what, anybody I'm sure that wants to help or participate, I'm sure they'll take all the help they can get, you know. So, the last thing I have, and if anybody else has anything, is, Tyler, us and all of us, you know, we've been addressed with where the government is trying to pass a bill to where the city's not in control of annexation anymore, that it's going to be your county, and that we can talk about your county government. But they didn't mean all that, and the, the report that I've got from KOC looks to me like, from what I'm reading, it's like that they've, of course, it's not passed completely, it's got to go through two or three different things, but from what I'm reading, from what they've seen, it looks like that what they're proposing now is that it would still be the people and the city's decision, but you have to report it within so many days to your county government. It's going to be more reporting, more paperwork that's going to be done, anytime there's any annexation that's going to be done or planned. But hopefully, that, that will stay in the city's hands, you know, to make that determination along with the people who's wanting to annex it. So we should be hearing more about that, but from what I'm reading from KOC, it looks like that it's just going to be more paperwork in 45 days before it happens, and before it's reported.
Emails, but they kind of, it's kind of a little bit different too. There could be some restrictions on it.
Yeah, it's said that too.
I understand.
But I guess they had a lot of response. I sent in a, the email to Mr. Herbler and Mr. Branscombe first day when he sent that out, just to, you know, try to oppose it, because I just, my opinion on it was that it should be up to the city and the people wanting to annex, because there's some of the things that, that it does for the people, you know, their insurance rates, their police protection, and if they want to have the city and have that, I think they should be allowed to, it should be between them, and then the city, that's part of our way of having property tax that we kind of have to get by to keep city operating. So anyway, that's where that is, that's all that I have. Anybody else have anything?
Makes you wonder if they don't want to try to get the control of everything, you know?
Looks like it's going to be...
Just wondering, I know we had some crews blow it over to City Park, that was down on the fence now, on the softball field, and, well, it's going up there by the picnic shelter, what do you call it, that all cleaned up?
But the Bradford, it's gone, the pine trees are cut back, we're waiting on, I think Neil got to hold a...
Hatchery.
Hatchery, there is, you got to hold Hatchery to redo the fence up there in the back, so yeah, we should be, we should be, we're going to have to get those Bradford, either cut back or cut down, one or the other. I've got, Justin Beers has got, I've talked to him, he's, we're on the list. I told him not to worry about us right now. I know that there's, they're still on paralel lines and houses and stuff like that, but we're going to have to figure out whether we want them cut way, way back, or cut down and have the stump trail, one or the other.
We're replacing them with something a little more tolerant wind.
I found out that pine trees or parrot trees needn't one's any count, because I had a parrot tree blowed down, and a pine tree on the house, so neither one of them's any good.
Yeah, and Bradford pears are pretty, but that's...
I mean, I, I think we need some pretty decorative trees over there, the Bradford pears, yeah, they're...
First, if we're planting oak or a maple or something, and...
Redwood.
Yes, a red, something, and they would, 15 years, it would about as long as Bradford.
Get a swamp oak, they've got roots center of the earth.
There you go.
Something's a good tack for it, till it goes straight down the way it holds it in the wind.
I do have one more thing, I almost forgot. I did talk to Mrs. Finch, that I was the property of that cemetery this week. You all may want to go look at that, kind of just find out how much property is there. There may be an interest there to sell that, but we need to see, you know, what we would be willing to look at, if we do want to purchase that, and how much land is left there, you know. I can pull a deed on that and see what it says, but a lot of times deeds don't tell you how much land. It'll just say it starts at this tree, and goes to this fence, and this walnut. You just have to figure out how much land there is.
Yeah, I don't know how much it is. I mean, is it a half acre, or an acre, I don't really know what it is.
Anytime property comes open, like, it's good to have, I think, around the cemetery. We're all going to die here eventually, and I guess a lot of us will be planted over there.
Yeah, as long as it's feasible.
Yeah.
Did you find anything else out on the other piece down here, that, about the leasings that was against it? Ricky's, Ricky's, please?
Oh, no, I just know that there's a judgment, I don't know.
I just know, any lien that's on a property would have to be released and paid full before that you can do anything?
I don't see that happening for, for a lot.
Just wondering how big, big a lien it is, thinking it's dead itself, or it might make it worthwhile, though.
Keep digging.
Yeah.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
Also, I talked to some of the city workers and of course, right now, they stay busy, uh, spring on into summer. Uh, mowing, cutting, trimming, all this. But, uh, for some time, they've been getting the, the parks ready, the ball fields ready. Uh, I, I know especially this time of year, it's a strain on them trying to work and, and mow and then get down there and get the fields done. I don't know, Tyler, they spend, uh, hour or two.
It, it'll take a good two hours today to get it ready.
Okay.
To get it, yeah, we, we do them. I haven't, I've only got one schedule. Normally they run them on the same days. We, you, we get the fields ready two nights a week, um, for ball games, is what we do. And they, we drag, drag and chalk the fields and get them ready to play. Um, you're talking, I mean, just, just the normal ways to work. I mean, the time you drag it and then go back and chalk it, the time you get everything cut up, drug it and put back up and it'll take you two hours.
It's not counting if it's wet.
If it's wet, that's another thing. I mean, we, we, we've worked hours over there to let it play, uh, before. Now that, uh, we've hand raped them, let them in the sun. I mean, that, that can get an hour of work, I guarantee.
And how much has the city been taking care of that?
We've done it for probably eight years, I guess now.
And who did it before that?
When I, when I was still coaching, it was the coaches coming down to get ready.
Coaches of the teams.
Yeah, yeah.
That, now, before we done it, before we done it, um.
Donnie Wilson.
Donnie Wilson.
Donnie Wilson, I said, I was coaching, Donnie Wilson saved us coaches a lot of work.
Yeah, I don't know how long Donnie done it, but I remember when I, when I was there, whoever had the first game that night, those coaches got the field.
Yeah.
That's, and that's like what you're talking about. Now, Donnie done it for a while. I don't know how long, I, that was before me here, so.
He done it the whole time, trail late and then a few years after. He just go, he'd leave the work and go to, uh, when he had the builder's plan, he'd go work on the field, you know? But it's just something that, I mean, they do a good job getting them ready and, and it, uh, they've got to be, but it, it's something we might talk about with the, uh, the coaches or, uh, baseball problems.
Yeah. So basically, we should get with him and see, I mean, if it's becoming a problem, if we don't have time or if it's getting in the way of what they need to be doing or, you know, in the city, then we need to find some, some other way to take care of it, I guess. So, um, I'm sure Dave is pretty busy right now, but, um, I'll see if I can get ahold of him. And schedule some kind of meeting with him to see what, I, I mean, I don't know.
I just think it'd be good to talk about it because there are, they are in kind of a, kind of a bind there.
I mean, I don't know the field that's gotta be ready to be played on, but I don't know whose responsibility that really would come down to. You know, whether it would be the city or if it would be who's playing ball over there. So we just need to talk about, I guess, and see what we can come up with. I'll get ahold of Dave and see if he can meet with some of us or something.
Would that be?
Anybody have anything else that they wanna talk about or anything on that? Like this for you, before you know it. Okay, I'm anxious to come in. Should we do that? He has it on his website. Okay. Drum roll, let's hear it. Coming to like this, two thousand twenty-three is going to be Aaron Tippin. Which we've already signed a contract. Uh, I don't know if you pull up some of his songs. And just like last year when we had Craig Morgan, I was like, I don't know any of his songs, who is that? But when I pulled up Craig Morgan and listened to his songs, I knew everyone had them. I'm just not up on him singing all these songs because sometimes they all sound like to me anymore. So I was just like, I don't know who it is. Same thing happened with Aaron Tippin. I pull up Aaron Tippin and there's all kinds of.
I just saw him a few months ago.
They say he does a great show.
It's on a good show.
Two others.
Roots and Roots.
Yeah.
Roots and Roots. But lots of, uh, lots of entertainment, he say he does a good job. He's, uh, actually, uh, got a lot of good songs. So we feel like it'll be a, a really good pick. And we tried to do a little bit of this year because last year we were scrambling at the last minute. Trying, trying.
Going out, going to town.
We were scrambling trying to get somebody, you know, and closer to get prices, you know, Florida, you know, plus Fourth of July, a lot of demand for people. So we tried to get on it a little quicker this year and we're, we're all happy with it. We feel like it'll be a good, good draw and so we're excited about it. They'll have to come out and enjoy the place.
And so left, everybody on the third, we're there, they're still out.
Yeah. They say he just really does a good job and so hopefully it'll be good weather, a big turnout. And we hope to have a few more extra things going on like this to add this year. So we'll see how that goes, but we're working on it, so hopefully it'll work good. You got anything else? Okay, nothing else, I need a motion through a chair.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Can stay with it.